I'd like to call me daughter, Tim, would you ladies have a place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christie, can I get the bank balances, please?
Yes, sir. General, $757,399.94. Sewer general, $259,653.16. Municipal, $21,274.11. Corrections, $3,437.12. Cash bonds, $6,231.23. Judicial, $5,858.18. Four and five cent gas tax, $30,642.29. Seven cent gas, $6,658.19. Rebuild Alabama, $59,336.83. Sewer customer deposits, $37,347.31. Sewer capital, $304,687.82. CDB grants, $34.08. American Rescue Plan Act, $68,962.7. Capital Savings, $27,828.57. For a grand total of $1,589,208.17.
All right, we have a motion to accept the bank balance in minutes and written.
Got a motion from Tim to have a second.
Second from Scott, all in favor? Thank you. All right, Jake, you want to give us a rundown on a couple of projects, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. So a couple of projects to talk about, just giving you that on what's going on. First, about the CDBG project, which is our sewer improvements project for slip lining some pipe down Brockway Road. Contractors have been working, they're about 85% complete at this point. They've slip lined the entire length of the main line pipe. And they've tied in all the service laterals, so everybody's house should be back tied into the service lateral. What they lack is really the finished work, so they can come back, clean up any houses that are disturbed in the yard areas. They're going to go back with sod, so there'll be a nice finished product there. We shouldn't have any issues with residents. I've reminded them multiple times to take care of the residents, make sure that those yards are better than they left them when they got there. It's top priority, they're on board with that, it was all priced in the bid, so there should be no surprises. There has been a little paperwork issue on CBD projects, there's some federal funding requirements that the state transfers down. Some payroll things and just some paperwork to collect. That's been a little slow for the contractor to deliver. But they're working right now with the grant administrator to make sure that comes through on time. And I think she's got 90% of what she needs at this point, and working towards the rest. So I think everybody's in a good place with it. What we expect to see, the group will be probably not working this week and next week on another job. While they wait for the rain to come and go. They'll come back after the rain sometime early, mid February, when sod's available, and start putting that down. Of course, that's weather dependent, if we get into these free situations, if we get towards the end of the month, may change that. But they're due to complete the project sometime early March is our expectation at this point. So pending any specific questions on that project, we'll move on to the next one. Waste Water Treatment Plant, some good news on that one since last we spoke. ADEM has officially entered into a grant agreement with the City of Owens Crossroads in support of the design effort for that project. So ADEM's goal would be to move design forward such that they can get a much better, specific construction dollar as we look towards grant funding for the construction effort of the plant later on in the spring. So they are having some issues with expending the money that they have and getting new money from the federal coppers for the program. So it would be probably late spring, early summer, at the earliest, before you'd be able to get construction money to start constructing that plant. But it is on everybody's radar. So at this point, ADEM has given the City of Owens Crossroads a grant in the amount of $250,000 as the total maximum value, we don't expect to expend that much money. But we are working through design at this point. So since last we spoke, the survey has been 100% complete, all ties to the boundary are there. We've done the environmental, the wetland survey is complete as well, there were no wetlands on site. So no reasons there to change project locations. The geotechnical report is complete with all the boring samples. Just based on the weight of the plant and the amount of sludge that would be in those basins, it is expected that this project would need some deep foundations, so more than just a slab foundation. I talked to the geotech about the number of things to try to reduce that cost. We did talk about what it would look like to maybe shift sites, maybe potentially across the street to the south. Indications were based on the soil types there, there would be no expected change, we'd still need the same type of foundation. So the city already owns this property, best case scenario, let's just move forward where we're at. The good news on that is the rock depth, so when you do a deep foundation, what you're trying to do is bed the entire project on rock in the ground, so it's not moving. Rock is only about 14 feet deep here, so it's not like we got to drill 50 feet eight piles in the ground or anything. We're actually looking to go with aggregate peers, which should be a reduced cost versus driving steel piles in the ground to support the treatment plant. So the structural engineer has already designed most of the foundation work, and he's working on the walls now between the basins. We have touched base with the supplier for the equipment, and we're working on drawings for the plant itself. We worked through a couple of issues with how to best design the plant for operation, with Bill involved in those decisions as well. We've been out to the New Hope City wastewater treatment plant that was recently built, that's not quite in service yet, but getting close. Was able to meet with Bill out there and talk through what he liked, dislikes, what we need to do different, what we need to keep the same. Good template to go by for the same type thing you're building here. And so we're moving forward pretty rapidly at this point with drawings. There's a couple of changes there that we're trying to insert to maybe improve some things over New Hope to add a cloth filter. So we changed some elevations and done some things there with the hydraulic grade line, but nothing outlandish, nothing that keeps our project, but that I think pushes our project past the previous budget. So the goal would be for us to look at having a design drawing set in some kind of draft format probably about a month from now, so middle of February is the expectation for that. By then, we should have all the equipment laid out on site, we should have all the electrical drawings done, we should have all the civil drawings done, and the structural drawings done. So we'd have enough to go to some general contractors and get a kind of a basis for our construction estimate to make sure we're still in the ballpark, right? So the intent would be, once ADEM notifies us that there is money kind of on the forefront of coming, we'd go ahead and advertise that for a bid and get a real hard bid from contractors that actually construct that type plant and kind of work with ADEM from there to get them even. So some of the big steps in front of us, we've got to talk with ADEM, it's a separate group of ADEM that actually controls the wastewater permits. You have an MPDES permit for your discharge. And we want to make sure that when this new plant comes on board, we're hoping to have very similar discharge limitations to what we have now. So the things they look for are nitrogen, TSS, which is total suspended solids, so all the things that that treatment plant is supposed to filter out of the water before it dumps back into the Flint River. That's what we want to make sure we're still in compliance with. So every time you get a new one of those, they look at what they're requiring of you, make sure that you're within those limits. So we're hoping that we are still in the same kind of category. If they require additional treatment, we may have to look at adding some UV or something to the end of the line before we discharge, which would add some cost. But we're starting to get in those conversations with ADEM as well at the, I'd say, local level. But they're still down in Montgomery to do that permit process. So that's kind of where we're at today, any questions on that effort?
Anybody got any questions, Conner?
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Jake. All right. Matt, have you got anything for us?
I'd like to approach.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, Council, how is everybody this evening?
Great.
Wonderful. Couple of things I would mention before I get started. I think Jake's doing a fantastic job dealing with ADEM and some of the feds stuff, that can be difficult at times. And he's really pushed us forward, and I think it should be noted that he's doing an excellent job in that. And I'm surprised that ADEM has the ability to engage in this stuff with Owens Crossroads rather than dealing with the moody trash landfill fire. So glad you're not dealing with that. Hearing the wastewater treatment plant, it was pleasing to hear discussion about that rather than, you know, a landfill on fire. So the reason I'm here this evening, and I had asked for this to be put on the agenda, basically just an initial presentation of some things that we've been working with and through related to the Water Authority that's in place at present. I kind of want to update Council, I wanted to do it in open session, so that both residents of the town and individuals that are involved in that corporation are sort of aware of things that the town has the ability to actions that they can undertake going forward. But just in the general sense, I think it's important to set out that the Constitution of the State of Alabama gives this municipal body the authority to engage into essentially contracting franchising with private corporations. And there has been some discussion for quite a long period of time about how we should proceed with this. And this evening, I guess the stated intent is for us to offer to the city what the city has the authority to do and seek the, in an informal way, but in an open session, direction for us to start pursuing franchises for all of the telecommunication, water, basically any entity that the state allows a municipality to engage into a franchise with. First thing we'd mention is, you know, basically, there's not any authority to use streets or alleys or public places by private corporation unless it comes with consent of the proper authority, with you guys being the proper authority. We don't believe at present that is being recognized. And I think there's been some actions undertaken that would be reflective of a private corporation undertaking actions that they don't have the authority to undertake or have not been given the blessing by this municipality to undertake. There is some pretty specific case law on point as far as what the city has the authority to do. One we would note, Orpheum case talks about the conduct of any public utility or private entity, the consent of the local authorities are required. And, you know, we feel that the council and the mayor directing us to express the desires of the city and direct parties to work with us in putting together a franchise agreement, you know, a contract going forward. There are restrictions, like any sort of contract, when everybody up here today has entered into contractual negotiation, it's a little give, a little take. There are some limitations that are provided by the code. The town having in excess of 6,000 people would require limitation on how long the franchise agreement can be in place. I don't think we're there yet. But it's an excellent segue into another conversation that we've undertaken with the city. And that's the eventual annexation and growth of the city. One of the things that's actually kind of interesting in our research is that prohibition of properties that are annexed in from a corporation undertaking actions, I mean, that's essentially something that can be used to ensure that the franchise agreement is in place for existing structure. One of the things that I believe is important to note, because it says come up in conversations, again, not conditioning this exclusively on Water Authority, but high-speed internet, those types of things. There's actually a provision that allows organizations that have a state franchise agreement. So some of your larger entities, and I think it would be entities that you guys would expect, you know, cable, internet, that kind of stuff. We'll have to do some more research as far as if they fall under the same circumstances that the Water Authority does. Something I think is important, we would caution the city, you know, obviously, the franchise agreement, contractual agreement cannot be entered into, and normally it's done by an ordinance created by the body accepting the terms and conditions as agreed to by the parties. But it's not something that can be repudiated just at the whims of the city. So if we do enter into this contract, we'd have to hold up our end. And, you know, obviously, that's something I anticipate the city doing. But it's in our negotiations with parties, we're going to show, hey, what we put out there, we're going to do, and we expect the same from you guys. There is a provision that allows the expense of putting the franchise agreement in place to be borne by the party that has entered into the franchise agreement with the municipality. So there is a certain aspect as far as publication, and what has to be done can be borne by the corporation that's seeking to join in the contractual relationship with the city. One of the things, I believe, has come up as far as taxing authority. There are limitations that I don't think at present would be appropriate for us to get into. It's sort of unnecessary since this is first discussion. But in an overly broad, you know, statement, there are limitations to 3% of annual gross and that kind of stuff. And these are things that are just black and white, on its face, law. I mean, it's statutorily provided, this is a limitation. So we would be engaging in conversations and negotiations with an understanding, this is what the state lets us do. What we would like from you is collectively as the council and mayor's office, things that are unique to this municipality. The needs of New Hope are different than the needs of Owens Crossroads, the needs of council are different than the needs of Owens Crossroads. The needs of Madison are different than the needs of Owens Crossroads. So we've had some conversations about unique situations here. I think it'd be good to engage with Jake a little bit and say, I know I've had conversations with him about repairs that were undertaken, you know, what's actually out there, what do we need to lead with when we start reaching out to that entity? Let's talk about compensation, I think there's money out there that the city is due that is not being collected. So I think that if the council, this present council directs us going forward to collect those, we feel that it would be something that we could put in place with an agreement adopted by ordinance and enforceable going forward. Timeframe. You know, obviously, engaging in negotiations, you can't ever say what the other side is going to be thinking. I think that there are parties involved that are reasonable. And I think if directed this evening to send correspondence to all of the entities that would meet the threshold for entering into a franchise agreement, I think we could reasonably expect communication to go out in a week or two. Hey, this is what the city is moving towards, please let us know with a reasonable timeframe for response. There are judicial remedies that are available for an action. I don't think right now we need to get into the weeds about that. But, you know, if actions are being undertaken that the city is saying should not be undertaken, then we can revisit that down the road. And again, until we put a contracted place that's adopted by ordinance, right now, I'm just telling you guys what we can do. So I guess just kind of wrapping it up, the big thing, and in talking with the city, we want to grow. And I do think that's something that is sort of a superior negotiating chip for us is the city having an eye on the larger footprint, and, you know, there's a carrot and a stick. And it is, hey, guys, you know, we're discussing annexation, we're discussing growth, and we want to go forward with you as a private entity making more money. Well, in order to do that, we have to do this. So I certainly appreciate the time, be happy to answer the questions. I don't think it would be appropriate for the city to undertake any votes or anything to that effect tonight. Just in conversations with the mayor and some of the council members, I felt it would be appropriate for us to publish that this discussion was being held in an open council session. And if any parties who are either representative or have an ownership interest in a private corporation that does actions in Owens Crossroads, we would be happy to sit down and talk with you and see what we can do going forward as it relates to franchise agreements. Any questions, issues, cares, concerns, anything I'm more fully addressed? Obviously, I made myself available at the conclusion of the meeting to talk individually to both the general public and council members and mayor.
So this is an info-only briefing, and you're not looking for anything?
I think that if the city were to direct our office to reach out to everyone who meets the statutory definition of a party who could be subject to a franchise agreement, we would receive that and undertake that action. So if in an open session the council were to direct us to do that, then that would be the action we would undertake. So I don't think it's appropriate for me to ask you to direct us to do something, but I do think that there are things that can be done that are allowed by statute that have not been done. And so if the city were to collectively direct us to undertake those actions, we would do that. Anything?
I think it would benefit us if we were able to agree to chase some of these franchise agreements. And probably some of the language in some of those probably should include that private organizations or companies doing business inside the city then they should be required by business license. Any, you know, permits that are due, things like that. I think we should pursue that kind of stuff. Personally, you know, I can't figure the rest of the council, but I personally would like for that to go forward and start figuring out who is not, who we don't have franchise agreements with, who we should have franchise agreements with, and what they should look like.
Councilman, I agree. I do think that there are, I do think that there are some actions being undertaken that the city is not collecting what could be collected because they're not in place formally. I agree, and I do think that there are, basically, everything can be negotiated into the franchise agreement. You know, the, what the city is willing to give in order to give, and vice versa.
There's no standard template, each one will be a custom?
Do you want to stand on that?
Yes, yes, I mean, there's, you know, we talked about 6,000 residents, you know. Statutorily, it's limited to 30 years, you know, I mean, if we were above 6,000, then I could say, hey, guys, I can tell you what has to be in there because the code says it has to be in there, but we're not there. I think that the city has been reasonable in their approach. And what I am perceiving from this open council session is that the city is directing us to vote the prize you as to what all private entities or individual corporations or private entities are subject to franchise agreement, or would be, it would be appropriate to enter into a franchise agreement. We're happy to undertake that, provide that to the city, and then engage in conversations and negotiations about how to put that in place and then seek ratification by ordinance of the agreement that's in place. Thank you all very much, anything else?
Thank you. So what was going on, buddy? Anybody got a problem with us going forward as that?
I'm not sure why we're where we're at, so I don't have an answer for that.
When you say you're not sure why we are where we are at, are you meaning why the franchise agreements are already in place already? Or why we're having the discussion about them being necessary?
Why does this come up?
Well, I mean, it's one of those things that as the city grows, you start looking at, you know, utilities. In the interest of full disclosure, you know, a pothole not being repaired, you never know what's going to trigger something. And then as the city, you know, hey, this entity is undertaking this action, under what authority are they operating? And so you discover that, you know, there's nothing in place. And so we feel as council, given our due diligence, is to make you aware that there are things that the city can do in relation to, you know, special privileges that don't belong to citizens conveyed by the government to a private entity.
So long and short, it's a problem we need to address.
I like it.
That just cuts the chase, it's a problem we need to address. Okay, now we're getting there. All right, we're sitting there going around, 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 so if there is a problem, we need to address it, okay, I'm okay with that.
I think it would be appropriate for you to say, we are presenting the options that are available to the city, and it has been deemed a problem by the people that are involved in everyday activities in Owens Crossroads. And we are happy to address what Owens Crossroads perceives as a problem. Okay. You gave the 25 cents, or I had to give the dollar, just to make myself feel better tonight.
Yeah, I live in the real world.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good. Scott?
Yeah, I'm good. You said something about 6,000 people earlier, is that the threshold for that?
Well, no, there's just limitations, you know, the code's about...
So over 6,000, it needs to be in place?
If it was over, if population was over 6,000, then there's limitations as far as how long the franchise agreement can be in place. It's like 30 years. So if, you know, if we were sitting at 10K, then I couldn't come at you guys with a contract, or it would be deemed to be invalid if there was language in there that says, hey, this is a 35-year franchise agreement. But we don't, and this is, again, looking at the boxes that are checked, and Christie, and I will make sure this is the case, all of the necessary framework for municipality like Owens Crossroads, you know, resident capacity, what's in place. Actually, this is kind of interesting, there are, franchise agreements are replaced by the county. And so we're having discussion about growth of the city in these unincorporated areas, how does that impact franchise agreement? Kind of get nerdy attorney excited talking about that stuff, because there's things that are in place that aren't in Owens Crossroads, but if Owens Crossroads were to pursue them, there'd have to be conversations with them. So I'll make sure that Chris and I look at how Owens Crossroads is recognized by the state and, you know, how many residents there are, whatever's provided meets that threshold. So I guess just make it easy, Councilman, man, we'll make sure the contract meets the real-world requirements.
All right.
What was driving the train, that's all.
Thank you, Matt.
I certainly appreciate it, I've had a great week, and we'll be, like I said, I think we can get the entities recognized and, you know, week or so, get correspondence out in about two weeks. And then I don't think it's unreasonable to give, you know, a 14 to 30 day, just hey, get back. Obviously, this is not something where the city's coming out swinging a hammer. We need to make people aware that there's authority by the city, and the city intends to exercise that authority. I certainly appreciate it, hope you have a great rest of your week.
Sir, thank you for your time. As your service. All right, so we'll go around the departments. Laurie, you got anything?
Just what's on my report, we've only had a couple of new homes in the last month or so.
All right, who's covering Tracy's stuff?
Either one of us. The overall total past due is down. There were some changes, you know, in the 18, the different levels that she has on here, but the overall is down about 5,000, maybe a little more than that. But as you know, she is very heavily involved in all of her past due, working on those. She's also been very busy with the business license, all coming in and getting those taken care of. But her report is pretty clear there.
Randy, you got anything?
I do. I included the monthly court report of the government body, but I need to amend, there's a continued down here underneath the cases disposed by top. I ran this through by Polly, and she noticed it. Our continued, the only continued cases, continued four cases and not 56. So that's something that needs to be amended. But other than that, just working hard. And I was able to make the debt on for our annual report that I had go into the safe.
Thank you. Great job. Appreciate it. All right, Bruce, anything?
We have our report, as you'll notice, his report, real quick, brief, some highlights. We had 29 calls in the month of December. That's down a little bit. The medic trucks are waiting on the, all of the stuff has been ordered, the sirens package, the lighting packages have been ordered, the camper shelves, as you can see in there. We had one of our first inaugural meetings Saturday, and we brought on 15 new people. And out of those, we have three that are ready to start running EMS calls.
Thank you, Bruce. Christie?
I have a reporting close there. Basically, most employees have picked up their W2s. There's still a few more that I have. 1099 information's been submitted to the accountant. I'm going to need everyone's payroll tax forms tonight if I haven't gotten it for first thing tomorrow. Scott, I know you probably need that the deep thing to do is keep your dream up by tomorrow. The audit's been delayed due to illness at the accountant's office. A big thing we've been doing is working with Targa Hog on sewer maps. Their mapper came out and worked with Will on behalf of the sewer department, going around and using, I'm not sure what it's called, but it's a GPS thing. They uses radar and all kinds of stuff, satellite imagery or whatever, and they're doing that. But there were some manholes missing and pump stations missing. And me and Bill and James and Sarah from Targa Hog all met Friday, and they talked, and we're going to get that out very soon. That's all going to be taken care of. We get that, finally have a map that has all the manholes and the pump stations on there, which will be awesome. And then we're working on our comprehensive plan meeting, trying to have our first one. And our first step is to gather 10 to 12 individuals. And you see the list there of what we're looking for. So if anyone has any suggestions, send me a text or an email, and we'll put that on our list. And then mayor will approve the final list of individuals that will meet with that group. And then the last I have on here is at the League of Municipalities Annual Convention and EXO is in Birmingham, May 10 through the 13th. And let me know if you're interested in attending, and I'll get you the form.
Thank you. C.T., you got anything?
No, sir. We added some track lighting out front to highlight our mayor's photos.
So it'll scare you more as you come into the building, right?
I think Christie's goal is to eventually get all the mayor's photos, so we can highlight that wall.
Thank you, sir. Jason, you got anything?
Yes, sir. For the month of December, we had 258 calls for service, had eight traffic accidents. Most of them were due to the sudden little ice incident we had. We wrote 20 warnings, wrote 36 traffic citations, made four arrests, and took 16 case reports. Also, we're working real hard. We made one arrest for the subjects that was going around breaking into a bunch of the vehicles in some of the neighborhoods. Officer Wilson was able to get on that pretty quick as soon as one of the calls was come out, so I want to commend him on that. And also, you know, thank the Mass Cancer Department and City Hospital as well. They come out in droves to assist him and also assist Detective White in the apprehension and capture of at least one of the subjects. But we're still diligently working to get the other two subjects as well.
Thank you. All right. Matt, oh, you got anything?
Just, Brandon, I'll mention one last thing. Ms. Wilson, they mentioned getting a report in, you know, in advance. I have the privilege of operating as municipal judge for a local town and then understand that Alabama Office of Courts has changed how those reports have to be electronically sent. And if she's jumped on that and done that, it needs to be recognized by the city because that was a nightmare for a lot of municipalities. And so when she mentioned that, I felt it would be appropriate for her to get some recognition because that AOC was not helpful, I guess is the way to put it. So she, if that was done timely, that's something the city needs to recognize.
I ended up with she goes.
Thank you again, Brandy. Great job.
Thanks, sir.
All right, we'll go around the table. Terry, you got anything? Tim? Scott? James?
Just a couple of fire department things. First, I want to thank Shannon and Bruce for hosting the meeting on Saturday, our first official meeting of the volunteer fire department slash EMS department. And really, really good turnout. Had our first training session that day. It's quite an honor to have Bruce on board and be able to do the training in-house. And just let you all know, we're getting the EMS side down, fire department's coming along, but a little more training's got to happen, a few more people got to come on board, but we're getting there. So give us a little more patience, a little more time, and we'll have something up and running pretty smoothly in a short period of time. So I want to say thank you all for all the effort y'all put into getting that done.
You guys had a great turnout. I got to see it. It was good. You guys are working good together with James. You know, that's what he says on a good day, so.
We don't talk about things I say on a bad day.
It was on because we offered to feed sausage and biscuits to whoever showed up.
It was that Poloni biscuit. I'm going to tell you, that Poloni biscuit was good.
Agreed.
Sausage biscuit was good.
But we're getting there. And for the rest of the council, and for you, Mr. Mayor, we're going to have to put some more money into that building, so I'm not presenting anything tonight. I'm just throwing that out there so y'all start thinking about it and know it's coming because we're, for what we need to accomplish, we're going to have to do some more things.
I'm working on that, believe you know.
Thank you. Yeah, we've got some plans, working CTs, getting some numbers together, and we'll make a, we'll present a total package of what we, a plan of things we need to accomplish, approximate costs, and length of time we need to get them done in. I think our biggest holdup, the trucks are available now, but to fully get them lettered now, that is still going to be probably another six to eight weeks at best case right now. So they're still running, but we're just not, we're not, we don't look officially yet, but we're getting there, so. I was really, really proud of the meeting. It mentioned three, and that doesn't count the young lady who just finished school, who hadn't taken her test yet, so we may have four medics running very soon. And watch the social media page, there's going to be some more updates, more things, advertisements for training, more meetings. If anyone else is interested in volunteering, put our plea out there. Right now, we need people with certifications. As time goes on, we'll be able to offer the classes and get you certified in-house, be able to move people along. So, but we're looking for volunteers of both type eventually. And so I put that plea out to the public. And to answer a couple of questions that came along on social media, as the city has grown, we are starting our own fire department. We still have the same mutual aid agreements. We still respond to county, county still helps us. We respond with New Hope, Daco, Huntsville, should they ever ask us to. But we are a new fire department, some familiar faces and a lot of faces you've never seen. But if you're interested, the door's open. Feel free to stop by and talk to one of the guys that's there.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion? Got a motion from James to adjourn, to have saga. Saga from Tim, all in favor. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your service.